Okay, we'll call this October 27th Committee the whole meeting to order. I'd like to acknowledge that we are on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. Record of attendance and Counselor Daers is online. No absent with regrets, any declarations of conflict of interest. You can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item. Okay. Approval of agenda additions or deletions. I have two additions so far. 11A, we'll put Staff Christmas Party. 11B, Invasive Species. That's Constable Daers. That's Constable Daers. Constable and Counselor. I'll do it.
Couple of years ago.
Right. Sorry. I've done that a couple of times. It's what I'm used to because I think we worked longer together in the RCMP than we have on council so far. Okay, any more additions or deletions? Anything, anyone? Okay, a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, got Counselor Bell seconded by Counselor Cleveland. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, we have two presentations today. We have, first, we have the Starlight with Tim Doucette. Tim's been with us before and welcome back. And congratulations on your award at the Chamber Awards. That was pretty exciting. So come on up and you know how this works, I do believe. We've got you all set up here.
Thank you very much for speaking today. I've been here before and I'd like to talk a little bit about a couple of things today. The first thing is a little bit of a recap about Starlight for those of you that may or may not know what it's all about and about light pollution and lighting, why you should care. Some of the benefits and some of the expenses that we're going through are some of the very exciting things that have happened over the last year. So just as a recap, the Starlight Foundation is a group from Spain that has essentially, they're from the Canary Islands, and their mandate is essentially to provide everybody the right to view the night sky. That's ultimately what it is. It encompasses everything from education in the schools, astronomy, astrotourism. And they have a lot of big, they have a big backing from UNESCO, the International Astronomy and the World Tourism Association. So our region here in southwest Nova, municipalities of Clare, Argyle and Yarmouth have been designated since 2014 the first and currently only Starlight tourist destination in North America. And we're only the fourth in the world to have both a tourism destination and a reserve. So it's a very big deal. Over the last few years, we have created Starlight experiences. Troop Point Lodge has started the ball. Deep Sky Eye continued. La Ni Stela with Paul alone, the Red Bird Trail. And we've, we're continuing to build on that. This year, we opened the Forest Glen Adventures, opened up. They have telescopes there at Forest Glen for people to camp in and observe the night sky. We've had huge support by Yarmouth and Canadian Shores, Tourism Association. They've been very incredible at spreading the word to different parts of the world about our beautiful night skies. I'm part of the Starlight Development Committee and the committee is about eight members. We are now expanding that to, because of all of our partnerships, we are trying to create a society. After that, this will be, we'll have, we'll have a meeting in November, we'll swear into new electives and hopefully by then we'll have over 15 people as part of our group. Our objective is to essentially promote the Starlight Initiative. We'll do all kinds of things as far as growing astrotourism in our region to help businesses that want to start astrotourism, want to incorporate astronomy or the stars in their own businesses, whether it's, you know, a restaurant wants to do an outdoor, you know, stargazing under the stars, meal or that kind of thing. Creating infrastructure, we started a Starlight Trail which is on hold at the moment. We'll continue that this year. I've been promoting astronomy in the schools, doing presentations in our local schools in Argyle. And of course engage our leaders to, like yourselves, to help support the program. Because without your help, this program wouldn't work. We need everybody's help to reduce light pollution and support the initiatives for it to work. Now, we've partnered with a number of different associations. Nova Scotia Tourism, we now have a page right on their site for stargazing and with all the experiences and also to tell people what to do when they come stargazing. You know, how do I prepare? Just a little tip sheet. We partnered with the Vision C Nova Scotia for outdoor lighting to provide discounts for people that want outdoor lighting that are dark sky friendly. Nova Scotia Power, we've, we're continuing talks with them as well to select the next generation of dark sky friendly streetlights. And as you may or may not have heard, we won an award a few years ago for basically the teaching of astronomy in our schools in our region. And this was awarded by the Starlight Foundation. I was hoping to make my way to Spain, but it was too short notice. So just a little bit about light pollution and lighting, I know some of you, most of you have seen this before, but light is, light pollution is essentially light that shines where it's not needed and wanted. The biggest problem right now, and it all contributes, but the sky glow is the biggest one where the lights are shining up into the sky, reflecting off of dust and water particles and blocking the view of the stars. The Bordel Scale is a scale that shows how dark your sky is. And in our region, just outside, you can drive 30 minutes from town and you're in Bordel one and a half, two skies, which is about as good as you're going to get. So we're trying to keep that. You know, about 80% of the people in the world live under light polluted skies where they can't see the stars at all. 65% of our visitors at the observatory have never seen the Milky Way. And it's something that we can see here very easily. Simple dark sky friendly lighting, five simple rules. We'll put shielding on them so they're directing the light where you want them. Light that shines up into the sky is wasted energy. Pick the right color. Use amber or yellow lighting. And anything beyond that, towards the blue end of the spectrum is called bioactive lighting. I'll explain about that in a minute. Pick the right brightness, put it on a timer so it's not all on all night, and consider your neighbors when you're putting up lights, both animal and human. Couple of myths that people have. More light equals more visibility. That's not true at all. You'll notice from the example here, a bright light that's shining in your face, you won't see people that are behind that light. Doesn't matter how bright it is. You want to avoid sharp shadows. Doesn't matter how much light there is. If there's shadows, people can hide in shadows. More light equals better safety? No, not so sure. So why should you care about all this anyway? Well, besides the effect of, on our tourism sector, and now that we're starting to grow the industry, effects on our eternal life, human health, the list is extensive now. And there's a lot of towns and municipalities that are going with dark sky friendly lighting to protect the environment. For us, for the town of Yarmouth, you know, it attracts people to our region to go stargazing. And I've had, I can't even count at the moment how many people have come to the observatory who just happened to be stopping in Yarmouth for a bit, come to the observatory and then come back and stay overnight in Yarmouth or come for food or, there's been an extensive amount of people. This year, we've had over, just close to 1,000 visitors at the observatory. Some stayed overnight, some did not. About 30% of them came from the ferry. Huge deal. So attracting tourists, a few other things of course is publicity worldwide, whether it's, you know, an individual person like myself who happens to be being filmed for a documentary, or whether it's just people that hear about Yarmouth and, you know, all these dark skies and stuff and things to do here and come over to visit. It's part of our heritage as well. You know, do we want to keep our way of life? The way, you know, what makes a small town and also a small town. And just as a sort of a side effect, you know, possibility of attracting other businesses such as even NASA to, you know, have a community or a foothold here that would allow us to have education, you know, maybe part of the community college to teach us wrong, whatever it happens to be, or open a rocket base, who knows? And a couple of other things, as I mentioned, you know, we've been sort of promoting the town, promoting everything in our area and our region. And as I mentioned, I'm part of a documentary, there's a film crew that stayed here for a week, they stayed in town. And they came and did a documentary on the Deep Sky Eye and myself and how this all started. And just so you know, I can't diverge the last part of the filming, but we filmed here in town, we filmed Cape for Shoe, we did all that kind of fun stuff. And the last part of the filming is going to be in another part of the world in April. I can't announce it yet. Some of you may know, I'm trying to keep it a secret. If you want to know later on, I can tell you for that. It's, it's pretty exciting and Yarmouth has special connections to that other part of the world, so lots of good stuff. So to do all this, we have expenses. Our community, which is trying to become a society, one of the things we're doing is we have to have a recertification. We go through a recertification every four years. In 2014, when this was opened, Yarmouth, Clare and Argyle municipalities contributed some money towards the roughly $10,000 bill to have this certification, to have the auditors come and do all this stuff. So in 2016, Argyle paid an additional $22,000 or so to have that recertification renewed. Argyle also paid again in 2018 for the rest, the last part of the certification. So in 2022, we now have to do that certification again. So we have reached out to a number of different organizations and, well, not organizations, but municipalities which are involved in this process. So we just received money from Clare, so the $5,000 for Clare, they contributed to the recertification of the project. Argyle, sorry, Yarmouth and Canadian Shores, we also asked them for some money. The rest here are still pending. So we are asking for the town of Yarmouth for $4,000 to continue this adventure and to continue building the initiative. Although Yarmouth, the town itself, is not part of the actual certification, Yarmouth has really gotten a lot of benefit from it, as I mentioned before, with all the people that are coming. The other things that we're doing are as far as education, you know, doing pamphlets, providing signage and stuff like that to the area to kind of teach people and make people aware of what is happening. So I do want to say a special thank you to the residents and businesses that have already adopted dark sky friendly lighting. There are a few in town, which I'm actually quite happy to see. And I do want to thank you, you guys, the town of Yarmouth, for actually drafting a dark sky policy. It's, it's a great start and I salute you on that. We provided feedback and we can't wait to see the next draft. Let's protect our dark starry night skies for generations to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Yeah, questions for Tim? Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
Less of a question than a comment, but working with the International Student Program and seeing and asking students what they enjoy about the area the most, that they can see the stars is the number one thing that's said all the time. And a lot come from, you know, huge cities that have light pollution, but also other types of pollution and they don't get to see what we have here. So it is a huge selling feature, I think, for our area that a lot of people aren't thinking about, but it is something that, you know, people that don't experience this on a regular basis love, love this area for. So thank you for all your work.
Anyone else? Any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Cleveland.
I would just like to say congratulations, Tim, for all the work you've done so far. And to reiterate what Counselor Lesser said, what we have here needs to be preserved because it's so special. It's what brings people to this area and helps to bring people to this area. So the work you've done up to this point is, has been fantastic. And yeah, let's, let's keep the dark skies dark for many generations to come. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. And I'll mention too that a lot of people get confused when they see something like a dark sky policy, that they sort of shiver because, oh, our streets are already dark. Dark sky policy and dark sky doesn't mean dark everywhere else. You know, it doesn't mean dark streets. It doesn't mean, you know, all that kind of thing. So we really try to iterate that, that, you know, even Tittle Wharf, for example, there's a wharf that, you know, we're trying to get as a, an example of how a wharf could be lit to satisfy both, you know, dark sky preservation and environmental preservation, and also keep safety and light places where people really need light there. So that's the key.
Good. Counselor Bell?
Thank you, Tim. Just wanted to go back to your presentation for a minute. Could you, Starlight Trail, could you explain to me? I don't know what that is.
Starlight Trails, a project we had put a concept forward last year and essentially it is a planet walk that would go and have panels along a trail. So the trail's already existing. We had looked at a couple of different areas to have it, and it's still not decided by any means. But essentially, it's a planet walk that is, shows the distance of the planets in a panel or a, you know, even a, it could be a piece of artwork that shows the planet. And it's properly spaced accordingly to how these planets were separated in our solar system. And also it talks about different, you know, the whole Starlight Initiative, the Milky Way, different things along the way. We even had a concept of having an app on the phone that would sort of give you some instruction and talk about different things. We wanted to have it, we're planning to have it in three languages, French, English and English. So that's the plan.
Good. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we next have the audit report. I believe Gloria Banks is here. There she is, from Grant Thornton. Welcome Gloria.
Great, thank you very much. So you all have a copy of the consolidated financial statements. I did meet with your audit committee yesterday, so we've gone through these statements in detail. So I'm going to give you a high level overview today, but please feel free to ask any questions that you might have. So I will remind you that these are the consolidated statements that we do for audit purposes. They follow public sector accounting standards, so they do look different than what you would see on a regular basis in terms of just your operating budget, because they incorporate or bring together on a consolidated basis the town operating fund, the town capital fund, the water operating fund, the water capital fund, and your operating and your capital reserve. And then on top of adding all those together, we bring in your proportionate share of those entities that you have a controlling interest in, which is the Mariners Center, the YASTA, the Industrial Commission, the Solid Waste Management Authority, the International Airport Corporation and the Waterfront Development Corporation. So all of those entities are added together to be presented in these financial statements. So you'll see your operations as a whole. So I'm going to start on page one. This is our letter to you. This is the audit report that gets attached to your financial statements. And the first part is our opinion paragraph. So the introductory paragraph just sets out that these are the consolidated financial statements for March 31st, 2022. And the second small paragraph is that in our opinion, the accompanying consolidated financial statements presents fairly in all material respects. The financial position of the town in Yarmouth is at March 31st, 2022, and the results of its operations and its cash flows for the year then ended in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. And that's your framework. So that's our kind of official opinion. But in terms of the way that we conduct our audit, we have to make sure that we have a basis for being able to give you that opinion. And we have to follow Canadian auditing standards in doing that, the way that we implement our plan and the way that we conduct our audit processes. And the whole purpose of that is at the end of the day, that we have to make sure that we can accumulate appropriate, sufficient audit evidence to be able to give you an audit opinion. We have a small section on other matter. There are a few pages at the back that are specifically just the water utility on a non-consolidated basis included in these financial statements for UARB purposes, but not normally required under accounting standards to be included. So we have to make sure that we point out that they're included in your consolidated numbers that we audit, but they're added for additional information at the back. Then the responsibilities of these, for these financial statements rests with your management team. So they're responsible for setting a system of internal controls that accumulates the information, the financial data, all throughout the year so that these financial statements can be prepared. They're also responsible to have what we call a 12-month lookout test. We call it a going concern, just to make sure that the financial statements are presented on a going concern basis, which they are. And then those charged with governance, which are your audit committee and ultimately you as council, are responsible for the oversight of those processes. On page two is the auditor's responsibility for the financial statements. Our goal is to obtain what we call reasonable assurance, which is a high level of assurance that there isn't a material error in these financial statements. Now, reasonable assurance is high level, but it's not 100% guarantee that there might not still be an error. Oftentimes, we find that that will result from fraud or other types of activities. But in order to get the risk to as low a possible percentage as we can get it, we do the following items. So in those bullet points, we identify the areas where there's a highest risk that there could be an error, and that's where we focus our audit efforts. We do audit every material balance, but we spend more time in the high-risk areas. Then we have to understand how your internal control systems work. We don't audit them and we don't give any opinion on them, but we have to understand how they operate so that we can make recommendations if there's room for improvements in your internal controls. We look at the accounting policies. We want to make sure first that they are in accordance with public sector accounting standards, and secondly, that the ones that you've chosen are actually what you're following on a day-to-day basis. We also have to make sure that we agree with management's assessment of that going concern assumption, which we do. We evaluate the overall presentation, so not just the first few pages and numbers, but all the notes that are associated at the back as well, to make sure that everything's appropriate there. And then because you do bring in your proportionate share of each of those controlled entities, we have to be comfortable that we've obtained audit evidence on those controlled entities as well. And then we are required to communicate with you on the results. They will be dated today. Hopefully you'll approve them when we're, we're done here. On page three is management's responsibility. So under public sector accounting standards, management has to in writing take responsibility for the financial statements. So this is their written letter that goes with the financial statements. And it just walks through their responsibility for the financial data. Okay, so page four is the consolidated statement of operations. So this is all of your revenues and all of your expenditures for the year. And you can see that we have the budget column, the actual column for 2022 and the actual column for 2021. And this budget picks up the share of the budgets for each one of your controlled entities as well, all added together with the town's budgets. So you can see from a revenue perspective, you had set a budget at the beginning of the year together collectively of $22,372,570 for revenue. You came in at $23,033,742 and the prior year was $26,110,909. So a couple of things that have changed from comparison to your budget and comparison to the prior year. If we look under the tax line, which of course is your largest dollar value item, there isn't really a significant change in your taxes that were assessed and collected during the year. The increase in your tax revenue is really again from de-transfer tax. So outperforming your budget and outperforming the prior year in terms of the sales of homes in the community. So de-transfer tax was once again very strong. Then a few lines down, you have a line called unconditional transfers from other governments. And you can see your budget had been set at $986,000 and you came in at $1,717,000 and last year was just a little over $1 million. So included in that line, a big portion of it is what we call the municipal financial capital grant, used to be called the equalization grant. And during the year, the provincial government decided that they would give every municipality in Nova Scotia double the amount of the payment. So this is the first time they've done that. So your payment in the prior year was $677,000, so you've got that twice this year. So over $1.2 million on that grant. Then as well, you also get a town foundation grant from this as well, was always $50,000. Well, this year you got $100,000. So those two items make up the reason why that revenue stream is so much higher this year than the prior year. The line right below it is called conditional transfers. So unconditional means you can spend it on whatever you want. So your, your grant that comes from the municipal financial capital grant, you can spend on what you want. Conditional means it's given to you for a purpose and you must spend it in that purpose. So the largest portion of what's in all three of these balances is your capital grants. And this number is going to fluctuate every year depending on the projects that you have on the go. So last year's number was really large. It was $7.7 million. Of that $7.7 million, $5 million related specifically to the ferry terminal renovations. This year, in your $3.4 million number, $2 million of that relates, sorry, $2 million of what was spent, but a significantly lower portion of grant revenue was brought in. This also brings in your gas, Canada Community Building Fund, used to be the gas tax money, comes into this as well. So the main reason for the big decrease is because of the extra funding that you got last year for the ferry terminal. The rest of the categories are very close to their budget and not a significant difference. The rest of your operations remained relatively consistent year over year. So that means you're ahead of your budget by $661,000, which is about 3% of the total revenue. On the expenditure side, you can see that you set a budget of $20,181,044. You came in at $20,909,179 and last year was $18,832,509. So you're ahead of your budget, over budget, I guess you could say, $728,000, so about 3.6% over your budget from an expenditure perspective. But you're up about $2 million over the prior year. So there's a whole bunch of things that are different this year than there were last year. Some of the things where in last year's operations were still affected by COVID, there wasn't as much in terms of recreation and even your transit system was a little bit down last year. But a couple of the things that are different this year is that you have a contract for the RCMP. So you'll see under protected services, there's quite a jump in the expense for the protected services. And that's because you were, your contract with the RCMP cost was up this year. Almost $400,000 was the increase in the protected services budget. And also you had some demolition costs this year. So you did, you did have to demolish a property on Main Street, so that was about $400,000 as well. Your fire costs are up as our transportation are up, both related to fuel costs and staffing related costs, but also on a transportation basis, the winter that houses 2022 was much more harsh than the winter of 2021. So there was a lot more snow removal costs in both the parking lots and in the town itself. Also, under environmental development, that's where your grants go to your organizations. So your grant that supported the Mariners on Main facility this year was higher. You wouldn't have had that last year. And then just in general, we know that the fuel costs are up and also supplies for buying many types of things would be higher. So at the end of the day, you have an annual surplus of $2,144,290. You had budgeted $2,196,526. So you're only $52,000 less than your budget on, on, you know, $22 million. That's pretty, pretty close to end up that accurate. In the prior year, you will see one unusual item almost at the bottom there. So the other pension item, if you recall, that was an expense last year of $1.8 million. When you transitioned from your own defined benefit pension plan up to the Nova Scotia pension plan, you had a catch-up to enhance the amounts that your employees were eligible for under the new program. So not that you spent 1.8 million, but you had had an asset in your own pension in an earlier year and then you had to make an extra payment to top it up. an earlier year, and then you had to make an extra payment to top it up. So that's what that $1.8 million is in last year's. So at the end of the day, your accumulated surplus is $82,74,361. Okay, so if we want to turn over to page five, that accumulated surplus number is the same on the bottom here as well. The two pages must tie together. So this is a consolidated statement of financial position. These are your assets and your liabilities and your equity, that accumulated surplus. Segregated at the top are what we call financial assets. Those are assets that are readily convertible to cash. So you'll see the non-financial assets. So everything you invested in your infrastructure is always below the line. The purpose of them is not to sell them to generate cash to pay your bills. The purpose of your infrastructure is to provide your services to your residents. So you can see your financial assets at the top. Obviously, your cash balance has come down a little bit this year. We'll talk a little bit in a minute about how much you've spent on capital in the last couple of years. But that would be the driving force for why your cash balance is lower this year is the significant capital expenditures you've had in the past two years. And your receivables are really consistent year over year. There's nothing unusual or different in them. They're very consistent. So your total financial assets this year are $7,726,949. Last year, they were $9,507,851. On the liability side, in total, your liabilities are $5,237,386. And last year, they were $5,189,189. So they're up almost $50,000, but not a significant change year over year. Obviously, the amounts due to the federal government, that's for your fourth quarter of your RCMP contract. The provincial government is your payments that are due to the housing. And then your general payables and accruals include your salary accruals, your vacation accrual, all your general payables. You have a line called other post-employment benefits. So your employees accumulate sick time as they provide their services to you, and that sick time gets recorded on a percentage basis as a liability to the town as well. There are some service awards in there as well. So that's what make up the post-employment benefits. Deferred revenue, so that's money that you have that is for future purposes. It's been specifically designated to be spent on an item in the future. And so you can see that it is up over the prior year, and you did receive a donation during the year this year that has been deferred because it was given for a specific purpose to be spent in the future. So a fairly large donation came into, and is sitting in your deferred revenue. So your net financial asset position, oh, sorry, I'll just mention your long-term debt, considering the value you have in your infrastructure. Your long-term debt is $466,000. So that's what you've borrowed from third parties, very small number, two years, that will be paid off. So your net financial asset position this year is $2,489,563. So it is down a bit over the prior year, and we'll see on the next page what's bringing it down. So you've been fiscally responsible for years. You've been setting aside money in your reserves. You've been planning how you're going to spend on your capital, but it is starting to dwindle a little bit. So it's, you'll see what you've spent on your capital in the last couple of years. It's time to think about that again, is kind of building up your reserves a little bit for the next couple of years to get you back. Still a very strong position, but it has decreased over the past few years.
Where's our reserve, what's our reserve number?
You have two reserve balances. You have your operating reserve and your capital reserve, and you won't see them on here because they're buried in that accumulated surplus, but they are in the back in a note. And your operating reserve has $1.6 million, and your capital reserve has $1.9 million in it. Okay? So that is in note 18 details what your reserves have in them.
Thank you.
So from a non-financial aspect, you have, obviously, we have your tangible capital assets are going to be the biggest number that's in here. And you can see you have a net book value of $78,997,626. And so I'll reiterate, that's net book value. So that's your amortized cost, because as your assets age, you have to depreciate them. And so there is a note at the back, and we're not going to go over it, but I have gone over it with your audit committee. So your original spend on all of your capital for your infrastructure, buildings, land, facilities that you have, is $132 million you have spent in capital. And it is now depreciated down to $78 million in total. And so this current year, you spent $7,681,000 on capital additions, the main ones being the parade street separation project. You spent $2.3 million there. You spent $2 million this year on the ferry terminal. And then you spent money on your trails, your streetscapes, and your water. All that makes up the $7.6 million. Last year, you spent $11,982,000. So over the two years, you've spent $20 million investing in your infrastructure and your community. Some of that was funded through grants that you got from your partners, but some of it came out of your money that you have set aside from your operating fund and designated from your gas tax money. So that's a very large spend over two years, and that's why we see a little bit of a decrease in your cash balance and a little bit of a decrease in your net financial asset position. So at the end of the day, again, your accumulated surplus is $82,74,361. And so just quickly on page six, I'll just do a little bit on page six and page seven.
Can I ask you a question first?
Absolutely.
Sorry, I should, I don't want to interrupt you. I don't, I don't understand, like, the note four. Is that as simple as we are owed $1 million in sewer and taxes, sewer and water?
Sewer and water. Yeah, your taxes are separate, your taxes are the 488.
Yeah.
So yes, about 1.5 million you're owed from the residents that still owe you for money. Yeah, for their, for their services that they've been provided.
Thought it was that simple, but that's a, that's a quite a number.
Yep. And so you'll all remember the conversation around your indicators and your house. And one of the ones that they look at specifically is what is that tax receivable number? Because they want to see what that is, and that needs to be under 10%, and you're at about four. So you're excellent on your taxes receivable. Your sewer and water have been high like this for a number of years, but there's a, there's a billing that's done right at the end of March for the water. So you expect there to be, you know, a significant amount because it's your fourth-quarter billing for part of your, your, your last billing. That gets collected in April, so, but it is, it is a larger number.
But it's, but it's like only at 4%, so that's good.
Your taxes portion is only at 4%, but the other ones are higher. Your water and sewer are higher.
Okay.
But they don't, they don't, in your house and your indicators, they don't look at the other two. They only look at taxes, so.
Okay, good.
Excellent question, thank you very much. Any other questions on that page then before I move on? No? So just quickly on page six, because this is that net financial asset position that we just looked at your balance sheet. And so what becomes very clear is it starts with your annual surplus that we looked at in your, in your statement of operations, but then you can see very clearly why your net asset position is declining. You actually had budgeted to spend $10.2 million in capital, and you spent 7.6. And last year, you spent the $11.9 million. So the $20 million over two years is what you've spent out of some of operations and some of grant funding. But any year that you're going to be spending that kind of significant capital, you're going to see a decrease in this balance. Okay? And then on page seven, this is a continuity of what's in your cash accounts. And again, it starts with your annual surplus. We always add back amortization because it's not cash. And then as you collect your receivables and pay your payables, all those things are affected here. But what you can see is from your operations, you generated $6,528,457 of cash. Then you turned around and you spent $7.5 million of that cash on your capital and $300,000 to repay your long-term debt. That's why you see a decrease again this year of $1.3 million in your cash position. Okay? So the rest are the supporting notes and disclosures, which, like I said, I have gone over with the audit committee, so I won't go over the notes again in detail here. But that is kind of your, a snapshot of your position, still in, still in good shape, down a bit from prior years, but still, still good.
Questions? Jerry, you'd have to memorize, but if you have anything for Gloria, by all means.
He's tired of me. At least he didn't say paint was drying on the wall while we listened to that.
I think he appreciates you more than anything. Any questions there? Go ahead, there's CAO.
I just wanted to, to comment on, on two things. One is the, the water sewer receivable. So as council knows, we bill water and sewer every month, right, a quarter of the year through a third of the town. So, so some of that receivable, as Gloria mentioned, is, is actually current, and some of it would be a month old or two months old. It might be useful to look at year-over-year and aged summary of that receivable. How much is 30, 60, 90, or 120? And get a sense of whether or not folks are, are falling further behind on water and sewer, or if the, or if it's actually stable over time in terms of the payments. So that's one thing. The other thing is just the last point that Gloria mentioned about the cash position. So our cash position over the last two years is, is down $5 million. But as she said, we've, we've invested in $20 million in infrastructure. So it's a pretty good return on investment in terms of our cash position, but, yeah, it's, it's a lot. There's no, there's no doubt about it, and we can't sustain that pace of infrastructure development. We wouldn't receive the grants at that rate, and, and obviously, we can't, we can't tax at the rate that would sustain that. And so it is, it is time to think about slowing down on capital investment if we can, be more thoughtful about where we put money and, you know, in terms of into capital, but also trying to hold some, and start to build back reserves a bit.
So, just one, one question. So around the, we can have this discussion another time too, but around the, remember when we changed the taxes from three years to two years? And that was, I don't want to, I say it was more for the citizens than us because we didn't want people to, to get into deeper, you know, difficulties.
So I think we, at that time, had receivables on the taxes that were pushing 10% or even 11% of our, of our tax levy. And as, as Gloria mentioned, we're, we're now down around 4%. So, you know, our policies on collection of taxes, I think, have been successful in allowing our citizens to, to get their bills paid.
And then, it's funny how, you know, one second you remember your question, and then, oof, there she is, gone. Something you, something you said. Oh, I wanted to just comment. I didn't know that we billed every month. I know that you get a bill every three months. So I just assumed that it was, they were all going out at once, and when Gloria said, "Look at the," you know, after March, that, that made so much sense because you're going to pay, you know? So that number wouldn't be as high.
So the way we do it is we divide the town in thirds.
Yeah.
Right? And we do one bill every month, so.
Much easier.
It's, you know, one section of town this month, next section, next section. Then we do the second quarter, right? Three months.
Perfect.
Every month, there's, there's a, a new receivable added.
Yeah, I didn't realize that. Go ahead, counselor. Heather?
Thank you. Yeah, I just learned something too. I didn't realize that, that either, so that's interesting. I think you already answered my question, but my concern when I look at this, the red flag that kind of goes for me is, is the deficit, and should we be concerned, concerned about that? And, you know, if so, you know, what do we need to do? And I think you kind of alluded to that, Jeff, in your statement, but I think it's something we need to be thinking about.
What are you referring to?
Or the decrease in cash and, and cash, and cash equivalents.
Yep. That's, you know, that limits, that limits one option in terms of paying for future capital. And, you know, we have, we have used part of our tax levy each year, a significant portion of our tax levy goes into capital every year, capital out of revenue, and that allows us to, to reinvest. And over the years, we've put a lot of money into our infrastructure, which is, which is important. We haven't used debt. And as the auditor mentioned, our debt load is under half a million dollars. That was as of March 31st. So, you know, it's, it's, it's very low for a town. Our strategy has been to, to spend out of current revenue, to leverage and receive grants, and obviously, over the last couple of years, we've used up cash. Other towns tend to take a different approach, which is to, to borrow and invest in the infrastructure and then pay the debt off over, over time out of current taxes. We keep our, our debt capacity as that, that safety net, rather than our, using it like a credit card, you know, for every, for every purchase. So it's a little different strategy, but, you know, one is, one is as good as the other. But being lower on cash, you know, does cause us some concern, and so we need to, we need to build that back up. The other thing, Your Worship, that we need to be thoughtful about is the, the project that is coming on Stars Road. And so the Director of Finance is looking at the cash flow and looking at our options in terms of how do we meet our obligations? And that may be partly out of current revenues, that the capital out of revenue, we may be able to use that. We may be, maybe consider using debt to, to do that, obviously, because of where we sit with cash, it probably won't be reserves. So, you know, one thing always impacts another when we talk about capital, it's about choices. And council does have, does have some choices with the amount that you levy, levy on, for capital out of revenue, but also, of course, your debt capacity.
I, I guess my, my head went to, it always goes to emergency, right? So I, I love what we do with the, not the credit card, right? That, that we're, we have borrowing capacity if we need it, if, if we need it. Thought we might need it. Not an emergency, but, yeah, big project. Okay. All right. Any more questions? If you think of something later, I mean, Gloria, Jerry, Jeff. Okay, good stuff.
So, so Your Worship, the presentation was, is in committee of the whole because the, the statements are now ready, and we want to get them to you as quickly as possible. The audit committee met yesterday and made a recommendation to council. So if we can have a special council meeting after committee of the whole, you can consider that recommendation, which is, of course, to approve the audited statements.
Okay. So is there a copy for me to sign? I marked all over mine, so, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, good. All right, staff reports.
Your Worship.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Your Worship, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that, or, or point out that the, the balance on a very large budget overall between all of our organizations, we landed within $20,000 of, of the target. And so I think we refer to that as bang on, Jerry.
Are we, are we out $20,000, or are we $20,000 to the good? Okay, we might hang around. We might fix that. Okay. Yeah, that's, that's amazing. Amazing. Yellow few, if I don't see your hand, just yell out, okay? Because sometimes I'm looking around the room, and I see you, but sometimes I might not see the hand. CAO's report? Anything for the CAO? And I see that you have the accessibility implementation plan there as well.
Yeah, maybe I can just speak to that for a minute. So, Your Worship, as of April 1st, we had submitted an accessibility plan for the town of Yarmouth, and now, now the work begins. And so this is the first update to council in the form of a report on sort of how we're, how different staff members are tackling the, the long list of, of work that is to be done. I, I'd ask you, take your time, review that, and if you have questions, you know, we're more than happy to answer. And, you know, I'd also value your feedback on the report format. If you, if you have thoughts about how the report looks or how you'd like to see it look, because this is our first one, we took a swing at what we thought might work, but we're always open to, to your thoughts on that because ultimately, this is a report to you. And if it gives you the information you need, then it's a success, and if it doesn't, then we need to fix it up.
Good stuff. Thank you. Any questions for the CAO? Okay. Fire department report, chief's here. How you doing, chief? Good. Okay, any questions for the chief? Go ahead, Counselor Daers.
It's not a question, it's a comment. I just wanted to, to note that adding six volunteers to these, to the roster in this fiscal, or in this year is quite a significant accomplishment, and it speaks very well of the department. And my, I, I'm told that the morale is high, which is an excellent thing for the department.
It's the best thing.
Congratulations to the chief.
Thank you. Things have been going very well, and I'm glad to hear that you're getting good feedback.
You had a good, you had a good banquet. It was, it's great that not only you had the banquet, but that they could do it at the fire hall, and I want to thank Counselor Balfour for stepping in and handing out awards and everything. It was, I know it was a great evening. Yeah.
Yeah, we, we had a great evening. The volunteers, we handed out. The volunteers, we handed out several service awards. We had a 35-year and a 40-year service award. We're well-served, absolutely.
Wow.
And there was good feedback on the venue. Yeah, everyone's happy to have this space again.
Yeah, the whole community is thrilled. Good stuff. Anything else for the chief? Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Operational services, that's for Chad. He's not here, but we can certainly get anything out to him. Go ahead, Counselor Daers.
Well, the question would have been for Chad, but perhaps the CAO could comment on it. I'm just looking at 2,000 cubic meters of Class A compost onsite. And I'm just wondering if we shouldn't be investigating a marketing plan or maybe some form of packaging? But boy, that's an awful, that's an awful lot of compost to be just sitting there.
We do have an awful lot of compost sitting there. It's, we've had difficulty over the years in getting the compost screened. There's lots of finished compost, but it's not quite finished until it's screened. Finished in terms of it's fully worked, it's processed, and you've got a nice product. But until it's screened out, it isn't Class A. So once it is screened, we've had high demand for that through Communities in Bloom for compost giveaways in the spring. And last spring, we had angry people because it wasn't ready. So having a bit of surplus on hand right now, as we roll around to next spring, I'm sure the lineup will be long to receive that. It is fantastic material for a soil amendment. So I will also say that we have, in the past, gone through a process to try to package it. And unfortunately, that wasn't successful, partly because the process was, I don't know if we had the wrong piece of equipment or if it was other factors. But bagging it was not successful. That would have been great because for homeowners to be able to pick up a bag or two, throw it in the trunk of the car, would have been very, very convenient. Unfortunately, we weren't able to make that work. There was a bit of a process involved there too with the labeling. So CFIA gets involved when you start packaging compost products. And the labeling, we had to ensure consistent weight between bags, which is very difficult when you get rain and stuff is stored outside. And it holds moisture like a sponge. And so on a dry day, you might create a bag that, let's say, weighs 15 kilograms. On a wetter day, or when the material is damper, holding more moisture, that same bag could weigh considerably more. So it had its challenges. But ultimately, we weren't able to make the bagging process efficient enough to create pallets of product to carry away. So yeah, it's a popular product. And let's see how next spring goes if we actually were able to clear out the many tons of material we have.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Lesser?
A couple of comments, I guess. I know Chad's not here, but the southeast and Pleasant Street paving are so long overdue. And I know there's not a lot of people that live on Southeast Street. But for the few people that do live there, I think they really appreciate that. Those were two areas that were extremely difficult to navigate. So those were two great projects to see. And I'm glad to see that other people are asking for sidewalks and stop signs. I don't think any of those are ones that I've asked for, which is nice. But one question I did have, maybe the CAO could look into it, is I've getting some questions around the lights on Stars Road and Haley Road in the morning that they don't seem to be timed right. And I don't know if that's due to the construction, that they set them off. But like, are 10-minute waits, is that, I don't know if that's just people exaggerating or if it's actually 10-minute waits?
I will look into it. I won't comment on the 10 minutes because I haven't experienced that myself. But let me ask some questions.
You come in that way every day?
I do, Your Worship. If there was a 10-minute wait on the way that I come in, the line would be backed up probably to Kumama Tata Ice Cream. It's incredibly busy in the morning. At the end of the highway, it's not uncommon, as it was this morning, I'm backed up to the top of the hill, right at the end of the highway. So you could have 15 to 20 vehicles coming off the 103, and they can't get off because there's vehicles coming in the hard-scratch road. So a lot of vehicles come in that way in the morning. And the lights are triggered by sensors. So it is possible with the construction and the digging that's happened there that the sensors may have been affected. So we'll look into that. But yeah.
Good, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I see some beautiful banners up around our town. That shows a lot of respect to veterans. And I've been kind of working with Todd on a project that we're going to try to bring to the schools next week, where the schools are assigned some people that are up on those banners and can give a little more information. So kind of, you know, not just a name and a date, but a little story behind. And Todd's did a great job getting ahold of the families and allowing them, those people who did purchase the banners will be contacted if they want to add a little information about our veterans in and around. So just a kind of exciting project that's coming down from that and the hard work that they do to put those up. And I also noticed a little work starting in Frost Park with some lights going up. And I'm sure that's going to look great too. So shout out to Todd and the crew and the great job that they do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Good to go. Planning and Economic Development, that's Natalie, and she's here. Okay, any questions for Natalie? Or anything you want to share that's not in your report? But it's always so comprehensive. Thank you. They all are. Go ahead, Counselor, Deputy Mayor? I'm just looking at whose leg's coming on first.
I'd just like to say, we had our first meeting of the Transportation Committee on Monday. Things went great. I thought it was a very productive meeting and good conversation. And talked to a few citizens who were on the committee, and they were very happy, kind of, the setup and the way it went. So it was nice to kind of kick that off and get that going. So, you know, shout out to you and Chad for being great staff members and helping flow that along.
Go ahead, Counselor Heather.
Hi, Natalie. Yeah, just a comment about the wonderful work we've been doing on the mural program and the facade program. It certainly adds a great sparkle to the downtown. The latest one, Richard LeBlanc's building is just absolutely spectacular. And so it's a great addition. I did happen to stop into 500 Main Street early this morning. I was out for my run, and he happened to be going in. And I just stopped in and spoke to him, introduced myself, and thanked him for what he had done. And he certainly was thankful to you for the assistance that you and the town staff gave him. So just great work, thanks.
You're welcome.
Deputy?
And just further to that, I have a friend who works in Alberta, a town out there for municipal government. And she's seen kind of what's going around here and had a lot of questions about, you know, she's actually from here originally. So what the town looked like prior to kind of the facade and what it looks like now. And yeah, they would like to maybe adopt, or they may be in contact to see, to have something similar out there. So the reach is well beyond just this area in this province. So kudos to you guys.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Daers?
Yeah, and I know, I understand, Your Worship, that you've had conversation with people from Sussex and Brunswick regarding our facade program. And they haven't been overly eager to adopt it yet, but the push is still on. And I've been asked to, I'll be in contact with their Communities in Bloom representative this week, or the next week, I'm sorry, because she's seeking more information and more support. But it just goes to show that this program is catching on right across the country. It's not just, and so we should be proud of the facade program and the mural program and everything that that's done for our community.
Yeah, absolutely. It's making a difference. It's funny because we try to, between Mike and I, we try to help folks understand. It's not just about pretty. It's a hard thing to explain. But for me, it's economics, it's making sure folks aren't marginalized, you know, like that everybody can come downtown and rest. And I always talk about the seniors, but we've had a couple of folks, you know, with mobility issues that said, I can go downtown now because there's a place to rest, that the beauty of the place actually draws visitors. Actually, Counselor, we had that bit of that conversation just before council started, this meeting started, that it draws people here. And they want to come here, they want to live here. It's just, it's economics 101. How do you get people here? No one's going to start a business unless everything looks great. So it's all those little pieces put together. It's, I just think we're in such a great place.
Yeah, I think it's also not just about people wanting to live here, but what we've seen in the last two years is, I would say, independent operators are attracted here to buy here. And that's ultimately, you know, how the town will become sustainable. Is that as one person leaves, another person will come, and they will brand it. And some of them are doing it without the program because, you know, there's a large investment, and the facade program is just a springboard. But I appreciate, along with the society, that they see the value of their neighbors. So it's raising the bar for them as a neighborhood. And we were just the impetus to start that process.
Absolutely. It starts somewhere. Counselor Daers?
I'll reserve my comment until later, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Thanks, Natalie. Engineering, that's DeMario. And he's, oh, he's on vacation. Good for DeMario. Okay. Finance, Jerry's here. Want to add anything, Jerry? We do. Any questions for our CFO? Good. Okay. In Yarmouth Recreation, and I see Frank back here. Okay, any questions for Frank? Good. All righty. Business, election of deputy mayor? I kept thinking that was happening in November. Well, I saw the agenda today. Okay, so I'm going to say how this works, and I'm going to get corrected if I'm off. Anyone at the table? So we do this two years and two years. And the deputy mayor that is sitting, Deputy Mayor Berry can be elected again, so you can be nominated again. That's up to council. Anybody else can be nominated as well. So what's that? Except me. No. Except me. And nobody wants my seat either, so. Oh, my dear. No, I count on the deputy, it's not a title. I can tell you that. It's not a title, no matter who's been in that seat in the last 10 years. It's a lot of, it's a lot of extra work, a lot of extra phone calls, a lot of filling in, a lot. So I will ask three times if there's any nominations. And each nomination gets a seconder. If it doesn't get a seconder, of course, it's not on the table. And then I'll ask again if there are any more until we're out of nominations. And then we will rewrite them down, write a name on a piece of paper. Go ahead.
Your Worship, that's the process if we have more than one nomination. Counselor Daers is going to have a little difficulty with the secret ballot, given his situation. But might I propose that maybe Counselor Daers could email me his vote, if he's comfortable with that? And I will keep it in confidence and delete it should there be an election.
Yeah, you can see, he's nodding. You're okay with that, Counselor? Okay. All right. So are there any questions before we go through this? Okay, and the person that is nominated, anyone that's nominated will have to accept that nomination. If you don't accept, if you're not interested, you would say, I don't accept. Okay, so are there any nominations for deputy mayor? Counselor Bell?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to re-nominate Deputy Mayor Steve Berry to the term, for another two-year term.
Thank you.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. Counselor Daers is seconding that. Do you accept that nomination? Okay. Are there any other nominations for deputy mayor? I'll ask two more times. Any other for deputy mayor? And I'll ask one more time, are there any other nominations for deputy mayor? Okay, hearing none, and you accepted. Stuck with me for another two years. Congratulations, deputy. You think the last two years were bad? Lindsey, order him a seatbelt. Okay. Police Advisory Board appointee, the recommended motion there is to recommend that Counselor Bell Hatfield be appointed to the Police Advisory Board to replace Deputy Mayor Berry. Moved by Counselor Daers, seconded by Counselor Lesser. Is there any discussion on this one? You're good with that, Counselor Bell? You're, okay? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Communities in Bloom reception. And the recommended motion there is to recommend that council host a reception in celebration of the Community in Bloom's National Awards. Now, I'm going to say this, I put this one on, and after I added it, I thought I probably should have spoken to the chair. Or, so I apologize, I was so excited. Like, right from the heart, thrilled for everybody involved. That's putting us on the map. And I just, I didn't want anything to pass without saying thank you because everybody couldn't go. So I'm looking for that motion. Counselor Heather?
So I'll move that motion.
Okay, thank you. Seconder, Counselor Bell.
I'll just speak to the awards, if you would allow.
Absolutely.
So last week in Victoria, B.C., the Town of Yarmouth won two awards at the National Symposium. The first one was a landscape award, and that focused on the Main Street redevelopment project. The credit for this initiative goes to the department heads and the staff of the Town of Yarmouth Economic Development, Engineering, Planning, Operations, and of course, past council and mayor, who believed in this project and set it as a priority and moved it forward. We were just the lucky ones that got to accept the award. The second one was the judging that took place in the Town of Yarmouth with our judge this summer. We had entered for the class of champions, and we received the top award in that class with five Bloom Gold. This was based on the evaluation of the entire town. It focused on areas such as green spaces, water collection, heritage, tidiness, environmental action, community appearance, tree management, landscape, and plant and floral display. So it's the whole picture of the town. None of this would have been possible without the help of the volunteers, such as the garden club, church groups, and the many individuals who care about this community and contribute to the winning of this award. To all the town staff, for each department has its own role in making this town what it is. To the town and park staff and Todd Muse and the summer green team, we know you put your heart and soul into preparing for the judge's visit. You took us from silver in 2019 to gold in 2022. This award is really for you. And of course, more, none of this could have happened without the support of our mayor and council, and we thank you. It takes a village to reach this accomplishment, and it cannot and was not done in silos. As our judge said, it was obvious to him that this was a As our judge said, it was obvious to him that this was a community that worked together as a team. Volunteers, residents of the town, town staff, elected officials, all working for the same goal. Yarmouth, he said, was a town he would be happy to live in. We are the ones that get to live here. Thanks.
Try not to cry. Well said, councillor. Go ahead, Councillor Dairs.
Well, and that was well said. And not to reiterate everything that Councillor Hatfield has said, I'm still at a province and I have been following the follow-up, I guess, from some of the, from the award announcement. And I found some of the comments that were made were very disappointing. I think people have to look back at the last 15, 16 years and see the number of awards that Communities in Bloom has earned. And it's not just about paint and pretty flowers, and it's not just about bump oats. It's about the entire town. It's about our urban forests and the care we take of our urban forests. It's about, just look at the number of awards that we, in all the different categories that the town has won. But this one is special. This is about as high as you can go. Well, this is as high as you can go without competing internationally. So for a little town of 6,500 people, it's the smallest corner of, one of the smallest provinces, to take this award home is significant. And so thank you to all of those that contributed. It's an amazing accomplishment, and we should be so, so very proud of what we've accomplished here. And it isn't just one or two people, it's the entire community. So anyway, yeah, I agree that we should celebrate it, and thank you for bringing that to the table.
Just, I'm just going to change one number in what Councillor Dairs said. I think we hit over 7,000 in population, did we not?
Sorry, old data. I apologize.
No. I can't get used to it either because we haven't gone up for so many years.
Yeah.
But we're up over, I think, over 5%.
Yeah.
That's a big deal, too. And it's not just a number, it's saying, everything we're doing is saying to people, "Come on in." And people actually want to live here. And as Natalie said, businesses want to set up here because they're supported, they're, you know, that whole, it's just that whole holistic piece of how do you build a community? And Heather said it right. It takes absolutely everyone, everyone, to be on board. Deputy?
I think so often we take for granted what we see with our eyes every day. It's like a little baby sometimes, if you see them every day, it doesn't look like they grow. But when you see someone's baby and two years later and you see how far they come, it's a lot easier to see that progress. So I think a lot of those disheartening comments come from people that just take for granted how beautiful our area is, even naturally. But to be able to, you know, put it on a national, you know, form for everyone to see, I just, it's great all around. To think that this comes mainly from volunteers says that much more about our community as well. So congrats to both Councillor Dairs and Councillor Hatfield for being on that committee and for putting in a lot of hard work. I think it makes our area look a whole lot better. So really happy to have this award.
It also comes from everything you just said. It also comes from something that none of us at this table or any of our staff ever forget. When people are going through difficulties, sometimes it's easier not to see what something means. So, and let's just say it out loud. If I'm having an issue with housing or, you know, food security or something like that, this seems so less important, and yet this is what brings people in to pay the taxes for us to provide the services to those that are going through all those things. So it's full circle. It's the big picture. Gil, you were going to say something else, I think.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one comment because, you know, Councillor Hatfield mentioned the judge's comment about this is a community he'd like to live in. And we've had a comment from Rebecca Cassie, who's told us that it makes her job as recruitment officer to bring physicians to this area easier because we're selling ourselves as a community people want to live in. For the same reason, the expansion of the Mariner Center, which is, you know, a contentious issue with some, when people want to move to a new community, one of the first things they're looking for are one of the recreational opportunities. It's recreation, health, education, and transportation. So recreation is one of those four pillars. So those projects are really, really important. And yes, housing is important as well, but you don't solve the housing issue without solving the, all the other problems that come with it. And we need, we need people to invest in this community, and that's the way to do it.
Yep, exactly.
It's a big picture, but that's the way it's done. Thank you.
Sure is. Okay. So I would ask our CAO and CFO with regard, I mean, I didn't put a number in there. I think we can sit down and talk about what we want for reception, celebration, but do we need a number in there?
Your worship, where this is an advisory committee, if the motion passes, perhaps in the next three weeks, because our December, or sorry, our November council meeting is back, perhaps we can work on what that looks like and what the cost might be, so that when council considers the recommendation, they'll have a number to attach to it.
Good. Does that sound fair, folks? Okay. All right. So are there any more questions on this one? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And then we have Meadowfield School Playground. There's a request there. Just have to bring it up again. Second page here. Okay, so they are asking for $75,000 to support their project. Their estimated budget is listed as $340. They fundraised 25, actually, I think they've fundraised up to 30 now. I talked with, I spoke with Kevin today. So, okay. So let's see where we are on this. What do we want to do on this one, folks? So, okay. Go ahead, deputy.
Just a few things to consider, I guess. When we did give support for Yarmouth Elementary School, I believe that came in at around $28,000 for that, just kind of numbers in comparison. The other thing we talked about was where this money, what fund that might come from. And I believe Councillor Heather asked the question at that time, how long did it take to get the fund up to the number it is? And just wondering if, could I have any answers kind of on that to just kind of see where we are with things?
Okay. CAO?
I thought I had answered the questions that the council had asked, so I apologize if I didn't get that out. So the fund, I can't tell you exactly how long it took to accumulate that amount. I did question whether all the money that was supposed to be heading into the account was making it there because it's been growing very slowly in recent years. And so Natalie was able to confirm through her office. So when someone does a subdivision, that's where the subdivision happens, and the fee that is associated with it is coded in their office, and then, of course, the person pays downstairs. So the money that's supposed to go in that account lands in that account. I think last year, the take was, and Natalie's here, was it $1,000? So it grows, it depends. If you have, if you have something happen like what Andrew Cameron did up on the top of Haley Road, where one property is turned into six, you know, that attracts some cash. But if you're just building on existing lots that are already created, then it's going to grow more slowly. Maybe the activity that's happening at the top of Harrington may lead to some growth in that fund. So I can't really tell you how quickly it grows. I can just tell you the last year has been fairly slow. And, yeah.
What's that? Oh, sorry. Councillor Dairs?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. In regards to the Central School Playground, I did reach out to Richard Gottling some time ago and asked him what the overall cost of playground was when they established it. And he felt, although he didn't have the numbers in front of him, he thought it was in the range of $90,000. So the $28,000 would probably represent about one-third of the cost of that playground. Secondly, this playground that's being established is going to serve, I think, a greater, a larger population, not just at the school, but in the community. You know, if you've been following it at all, Linda Gallagher is, I think, leading the fundraising campaign. There's hardly a week that goes by that they haven't been, haven't held some type of an event. I think the last week or so, it was an auction or something at the school. And this coming up very soon is going to be a car rally. It seems like they're very, very active in their fundraising, and they, as you say, they've reached approximately $30,000. So the progress has been fairly slow. I think it's an important project. I think the money's in the account to support the project. It's, you know, it's approximately one-third of the, the town is in the catchment area for the school, and I think it's something that we should be supporting. They've already lost one school year. Likely going to lose a second school year without a playground and possibly a third if they, if they're unable to get enough funds to really get the job done. So I'm going to make the motion that we provide them the $75,000 as per the request. Thank you.
Have we got a second? Okay. No second. So what's the next step, CAO? I mean, if there's questions or you want to table it and see what happens with other funding, go ahead.
So your worship, if there's not a second for the motion, the motion doesn't hit the table. Another motion can hit the table. You can, you could propose, somebody could propose a different amount. You could defer the matter if council wants more time to deliberate on it. You could refer the matter to staff if there's further information that you'd like staff to gather. Those are essentially your options.
Okay. Councillor Dairs, what did you, what did you say was the, not that this is a big deal, but the town students, what's the ratio?
Oh, I'm not exactly sure of the ratio. I just know that the catchment area for that school is approximately one-third of the town, I believe. So it is, yeah, it does, it has a significant impact on town residents, for sure.
Okay. All right.
But it will be an accessible playground as well, which is part of the reason for the, for the cost.
Okay. All right. So it's up to you, folks. Do we want to table it? Do we want to? Councillor Heather?
Thank you. Yeah, I would feel more comfortable in tabling it for the time being, and I, it certainly is a worthy project. I just would like to see where other funding would be coming from and how much more the committee themselves can raise. And just, yeah, see where, see where they land and what they need at the end. That's where I kind of sit.
So, CAO, is that, does she make a motion to table?
I would say, since there's no motion on the table, to defer the item.
Okay.
To a later date.
So the motion to defer? I'm just, because she just said she wants to table. So if she, is it the, whatever? Yeah, I don't know. I have to do it appropriately before I go to the next person. So is that, is it a motion to defer?
Yeah, just make a motion.
Okay. Is that what you're doing? Do I have a second?
Well, if you're making a motion to defer, then I'll second it.
All right. So did you, was that what you were going to do?
No. No. I had some comments, but if we're going to defer, let's do that, and I'll get the information that I want.
Okay.
At that time.
All right. Okay. Go ahead, deputy.
Just on a side note, I did speak to Kevin Gobian earlier today, and they are going to the municipality for the same ask. So I think maybe deferring where that is in their, kind of on their side of things, and it's kind of how we do business. Just to let everyone know, this isn't about not supporting our kids and trying to save a few bucks. That's not, no. It is a large number, but it is our kids, and I think if we do this properly and see where everyone else is at, and if this is still needed, then I'm sure we'll do what needs to be done. But just to let everybody know, it's just about being fiscally responsible, seeing where things are. A big shout out to the Meadowfields crew. I mean, as Gil said, they're out every weekend. They had a barbecue down at the Jay Strong cop. They're doing their part as well. So I do think this would, will move forward, but maybe just a little, in a month's time, we might be in a better place to make this go through.
Yeah. Good. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, your worship. Just a question. I am trying to understand where in the process it would be appropriate to refer this to budget. Are we, I would be more comfortable if we were talking about budgeting for the next fiscal year, since we just, we just had our auditor in and looked at our financial statements, and it's just, it's just the idea of, of planning and managing our budgetary process in a way that is rational. It just feels like we're constantly being asked for money, and we want to help, but we also are managing a $23 million institution here, and we're trying to do it responsibly. And I, so the question is, would it be appropriate to refer this matter to budget? That, I guess, I'm just asking, where would you do that? When would that be an appropriate thing to do?
Well, it's always appropriate to refer a financial matter to the budget if it isn't in the current year's budget, and this isn't. The reason I think I was, I was not looking at this in the same way is that there's, there is a special purpose reserve for this. And although the request is coming mid-year, it's clear that the intention of council, at least in prior discussion, and I think in the part of this discussion, was, was that they would use that reserve, which we could make transfer out of reserve and provide a grant. Pardon me?
Oh, sorry. That's the open spaces account? Is that what we're talking about?
Open space account, yeah.
Okay. And, okay, so I, before I make a decision, I feel as though I need to have more information about what we will not be able to do if we use this money for this purpose. You know, in terms of maintenance and, and supporting the parks that we already, you know, the playgrounds that we already are responsible for in the Town of Yarmouth. So I just would like a little, so I would like a little more information on that. So, yeah, deferral sounds like a good plan.
Any more comments? There's a motion on the floor? Okay. And the motion is to defer. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Oh, we're at additions already. Okay. Additions. Okay. So staff Christmas party. Just had very brief conversations, but we haven't been able to do this, and we've seen when people are getting together, how excited they are. So I think this would, this would be for staff and council, and something, I don't know what it would be, but something fun. So, and you don't have to attend, certainly. That's a, that's a call. Some people just want to go home after work. Some people want to, you know, get out and chat. But even something like as simple as bowling and pizza. It doesn't have to be a fancy, let's sit down and have a turkey dinner, because we do that, and then we kind of, be honest. we get up and then we leave, right? So, something that's engaging and fun, but that's, that's a council call if we wanted to do something like that for staff, since we haven't been able to do that for a lot of years. Just looking at your thoughts on that one. Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
I like the idea of, like, bowling and pizza, something simple. I think at Christmas time, there's so many formal things going on, and people are always, you know, they're tired at the end of the day, and they think they got to go home and get dressed up to go back out to eat, as opposed to get dressed down and go have, just have some fun. So, something that is more relaxing, I think, might be, might be good.
Okay. I guess we'll, I guess we can figure out what it's going to be. It could be something like that, but we just need to know if folks are interested, if we're interested in supporting that. Okay? So, I would need a motion that we look into hosting a Christmas party for staff. Okay? Counselor Lesser, seconded by Counselor Cleveland and Counselor Heather. Okay. Any more discussion on that? Lindsay, I'll just sit down with you, and I'll send a note out to council, see if there's any ideas, because it's hard to think of something, but something simple that's, you know, not, not expensive, and not, like Counselor Lesser said, not difficult to just, you know, let's just go out and have some fun. Yeah. Okay? Any discussion on that one? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And then, Counselor Dears, invasive species?
Yes, thank you for indulging me with this on the, on the agenda. Earlier this year, I contacted Mr. Sallos, David Sallos, regarding the Tansy wort that was appearing in town, and I know that that's an invasive species, and it affects, has a negative impact, particularly on people who have cattle. But during that conversation, Mr. Sallos indicated that there was another invasive species known as the Himalayan blackberry. And I actually had some personal encounter with that, because the property I purchased was, the backyard was overrun with it, and it's a really difficult plant to deal with. But anyway, at the time, Mr. Sallos indicated that, in fact, it has been identified, it's a highly invasive species. It's been identified for the Nova Scotia Invasive Species Council, and that it's been discovered in Yarmouth. Now, this originally was brought over to the west coast of the United States as, and being propagated as a source of blackberries, but if you, if you go along the trail, just outside of town, along the waterfront in town, you'll see that this really takes over the area where it gets transplanted. And I can provide you some pictures that I took while in DC of this, this blackberry bush, bushes, basically consuming a 20-foot tall cedar hedge. And I can tell you that it, I don't even think a cat can get through it, but it takes over, and it's, I think it's epidemic in DC. I don't think there's anything they can probably do about it at this point. But since Yarmouth has been identified as the location where it first has been located, I think it's really important that we get a handle on it very quickly. I can tell you that it took me a patch that was probably 20 or 30 feet long, and it is wide. It took me about two weeks just to get rid of it, and I suffered some injury in the process, I can tell you. But the importance, I guess, the necessity of getting started on this now is that, I think it's kind of time-sensitive, because we have to get a handle on it before next season. What happens is, of course, the berries that are produced are quite large and quite attractive, and especially to birds, and birds will eat the berries, and then they transport the seeds to other locations, and the problem starts all over again. So, now's the time, if we have an opportunity, to really get a handle on this. So, I think what needs to happen is, and what I'm going to suggest, is that we reach out to the Nova Scotia Invasive Species Council to try to come up with a management plan. We also, I think, need to engage with our municipal partners, because if you walk the rail trail just outside of town, you'll see where these blackberries have taken hold on the side of the trail. So, I think we really need to come up with a plan. It's, and I think, when I say a sense of urgency, I think we need to have a plan in place and have an eradication process underway prior to next season's, blooming season. So, anyway, I would make, I guess, probably make a motion that, that staff engage with the Nova Scotia Invasive Species Council and try to develop a plan of attack to eradicate this species in the Yarmouth area, before it takes over the rest of the province as well. I think we have a duty or responsibility to, to prevent that from happening. Mr. Sallos has indicated that it's already been found in Bear River, in that area, and so, you know, it's one of those things. I haven't, I've been traveling around the province of DC a little bit, and I can tell you that it's just absolutely amazing, and just disheartening to see how far this plant has spread. So, that would be my motion, that staff engage with the council to develop a plan. Thank you.
Okay. If I get a second, or? Deputy Mayor? Okay. Is, did you say it's in town, too? Must be.
Yeah, it's on the waterfront, it was on my property.
Water Street, that's right, I remember that.
Sorry. It was on my property in Kai Crescent, and quite honestly, when I first started dealing with it, I really didn't know what I was dealing with. I had no idea that it was what it was until Mr. Sallos made it perfectly clear that, in fact, that's what I was dealing with. The canes, some of the canes are 30 to 40 feet long, and an inch in diameter, and when they touch down again, they reroot and start up another plant, and it's just, and the thorns of them, I'm told the thorns on these things can actually kill birds that go in for the fruit, because they're deadly. But, it's a, it's a really hard plant to get rid of.
Counselor Cleveland?
Yeah, it's kind of interesting. We did a series of videos, Dave Sallos and I, that Mike filmed as part of Updates from the Edge about that, and about another invasive species called Tansy wart. And after the Tansy wart one, that's another one we should really look at eradicating, because it spreads so quickly, and once it was pointed out to me that it existed, it's everywhere, and it's poisonous. And it's the same with this Himalayan blackberry. It really is a problem. I found it kind of interesting, because in talking about this, of course, Gil also, in our emails forwarded an article, and if you read the article, it kind of insinuates that it was just discovered last week that it existed, which I thought was kind of funny. But, yeah, it certainly is a problem, and it needs to be taken care of. Even if we took care of it in a way that involved volunteers as well as staff, I think we should have people looking for this stuff and figuring out the proper way to get rid of it.
Good stuff. Okay. Any further comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Speaking of which, are we adding that? I guess we just passed that motion. We need them to look at the other one that you just mentioned?
Oh, the Tansy wart? We can make a
Go ahead.
Sorry, your worship, yeah, if we're going to pass that, then let's, let's pass the hat and include the look at Tansy wart for the eradication as well.
Okay.
That's a motion.
Okay, seconded by Deputy Mayor. Any comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carry. Thanks, folks. Okay, that is, okay, so, next thing is in camera? Do we have something in camera? Okay, so have a motion to go in camera, anyway. What's that? Okay, motion to adjourn.
So.
Okay, I'm calling this council meeting to order. A record of attendance, approval of the agenda, there's one agenda item on there, which is audited statements. So, the motion would be, CAO?
So, it's a recommendation from the Audit Committee, which is chaired by Counselor Cleveland, to recommend the acceptance of the audited financial statements as presented.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bow, seconded. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. I guess there's really nothing in camera. Okay, motion to adjourn.